Morning. Where are you gonna sit?
[clears throat]
[bell dings]
Hey Beth.
Hello. Are you Colleen? How are you Tom?
Good, thank you.
Good.
No, no.
[bell dings]
Hi there.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. It's crazy to see your minutes, how long ago it's been since.
I know.
Matt.
Crazy.
Hey Michelle.
How you doing Tom? Do you have something that you can hear better than lines meetings? Yeah?
I sure hope so.
Okay, good.
Hi everyone, it's Sarah. Beth, I think everybody's here whenever you're ready to start, we can go ahead.
Okay. Okay, good evening. I would like to call the meeting to order. Sarah, would you please take role?
Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Kip.
Present.
Commissioner Oaks.
Present.
Commissioner Siegfried.
Here.
Commissioner Triplett.
Here.
All present.
I'm sorry, did we, you finished the roll call, I froze up for a minute there.
Yes, we did. We're all present, we can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Alright, moving on to approval of the minutes. Is there any discussion on the November 18th, 2019 regular meeting minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
This is Orin Kip, I move to approve the minutes.
Do I, alright, actually, I will just second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the public hearings. Tonight, we are considering a conditional use permit and site plan review for an expansion of burial sites including upright columbaria, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, structures within the St. Michael Cemetery located at 706th Street North. Sarah, could you please present the details of this application?
You, Commissioner Kelly, Adam is gonna assist here with doing some screen sharing of some of the exhibits. I think we have a photo of the cemetery to start out. Great. St. Michael Cemetery is located on 6th Street North. It is surrounded by a variety of zoning districts and land uses, including the correctional facility, the city cemetery, and both single and multifamily residential units. Move on to the certificate of survey now. In 2008, the church began planning for a future burial expansion area in the southeast portion of the property, which is indicated as parcel A on this certificate. The objective was to offer additional grave sites for both cremains and casket burial sites, including upright columbaria structures. Before proceeding with the expansion, the city identified several discrepancies at the cemetery which needed to be resolved, including varying zoning specifications, inconsistent property boundaries, and existing graves that were located in unimproved city rights of way. Now that the rezoning, vacation, legal descriptions, and deeds have been rectified and recorded, the church intends to proceed with plans for the southeast expansion area. Since St. Michael's was in existence prior to adoption of the zoning code, it is considered a legal non-conforming use and may continue to operate as a cemetery. However, the city's rezoning approval in 2010 stipulated that no structures shall be constructed on the property without first obtaining a conditional use permit and site plan approval from the city. As such, the church is requesting such approval for the expansion area and the proposed columbaria. Now we'll move on to the master plan, which is exhibit MP1. The master plan layout is relatively consistent with other portions of the cemetery, offering additional grave sites for both cremains and casket burials. Traditional casket graves are shaded in green, cremains are indicated in blue, and the columbaria are indicated as gray crescent shapes located adjacent to the blue cremains areas. The burial sites will be accessed by one main circular drive and connected by a series of walkways. The master plan delineates various existing trees that will remain on the property, as well as proposed trees planned for the expansion area to create a peaceful and inviting landscape. A minimum thirty foot setback will be retained along the south property line to ensure a suitable buffer from the adjacent private residential property. The remainder of the property will be regulated by a minimum twenty foot setback. The proposed and previous coverage for the expansion area is eighteen point seven percent, which is well below the maximum of thirty-five percent allowed in the zoning district. Substantial stormwater management upgrades will also be implemented as part of the project as specified by the Middle Sinkwater Watershed Management Organization. Moving on to the exhibit of the columbaria structure, which is sheet MP4. Columbaria depicts, or this exhibit depicts the columbaria, which are two-sided upright structures. Up to ten columbaria are proposed, offering a total of fourteen hundred niches. Six hundred of the smaller niches will accommodate one cremains, and eight hundred of the larger niches will accommodate two cremains. Each columbaria will be just over seven feet in height and consist of approximately three hundred and eighty square feet of area. The columbaria will be constructed of a combination of granite and masonry stone. By allowing for multiple cremains and niches in one structure, the columbaria are designed to maximize the use of space and increase the cost and maintenance associated with individual grave sites. Moving on to the phasing plan. That's sheet MP2. Due to unspecified demand for burial sites and potential financial implications, the overall expansion project is planned in multiple phases. Phase one is shaded in blue and includes the utility extension, access road, walkways, stormwater treatment, plantings, and landscaping along the property perimeter. These improvements will be required to be completed prior to occupancy and use of the grave sites and columbaria located in the central plaza. Phase two improvements are shaded in beige, and phase three are shaded in green. Improvements within each phase, such as the walkways and landscaping, will be required to be completed prior to occupancy or use of the grave sites and columbaria in each phase. Because the proposed expansion is consistent with the existing cemetery use, the columbaria will not alter the character of the neighborhood, and the land use is in harmony with the city's comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit for the columbaria structures, subject to implementation of the master plan site improvements and the conditions listed in the staff report. For the record, notice of tonight's public hearing was published in the Stillwater Gazette and mailed to all property owners within three hundred and fifty feet of the property. The city did not receive any public comment related to the application. Public Works Director Matt Klein and the city engineer have also completed a review of the application. Matt, if there's anything you would like to comment on, that would be a good time. Otherwise, both Matt and I would be happy to take any initial questions from the planning commission before opening the public hearing. And I should also mention that the project representative, landscape architect Greg Johnson, is also present and available for questions.
Matt, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't have anything to add. They moved forward with all the questions that we had and relayed them to the property authorities and fixed the stuff that we had questions on, so. From the public work standpoint and engineering standpoint, stormwater management standpoint, their view it is good to go for us unless you guys have questions on that stuff.
Okay, thank you. Questions from any of the planning commission members? I guess maybe raise your hand and I'll call on you. This is our first time, so I will learn. Aaron, Commissioner Oaks, please go ahead.
Yeah, hey, this is, it's good to read the history and of this, and it was put together really easy for me to capture the history and what's going forward. It looks like there was a lot of good work getting out to this point. It looks pretty straightforward. One thing I was wondering about, because I've drive by this cemetery often in Bayport, the private residents since there, are there any concerns with, from the resident of construction, anything else that may come up from the resident that lives there?
Commissioner Kelly, I can respond to that. In conversations over the years with the cemetery committee and the church staff, and as well as the project representative Greg Johnson, I believe there have been open conversations with that private property owner. They have not reached out to the city and contacted us specifically about this component of the cemetery and the expansion. They did receive mailed notice of the public hearing and an opportunity for comment or to ask questions or more, get more information regarding the expansion, and I did not hear from them, so. Maybe I'll call Greg to see if you can elaborate anymore on that question.
Well, I haven't talked to the people. And the only problem they could have would be the stormwater, and if you look at the master plan one sheet again, if you could go back to that. And we can look at the grading plan just north of the residence. If if we can get the master plan, just so everybody can see what I'm talking about here. There we go, okay. Currently, quite a bit of the stormwater from the cemetery site goes over past the property boundary to the private residence, and if you look at now, in the southeast corner, we have a swale and a stormwater basin to capture all the water before it goes over. So actually, the grading plan will improve the stormwater the stormwater control. And we will be doing some screening too, you can see on that plan. So I think we've done what we can do to make them happy. And don't think that they have said anything. Have they commented at all on this plan, or have they seen the plan? I don't know that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. A question I have is, when is the, if this is approved, is it planned for construction to start this summer?
Claudia could probably answer that. My, my assumption is we're gonna go out and start as soon as the frost lifts. Claudia can probably add some to that, she's on, I know, I saw her.
You're on mute. Ms. Baldwin.
So yeah, that is correct. We would like to start as soon as possible to take care of all the conditions that are required and then to, you know, to start with the columbaria, so.
Will this cause any issues with, I guess, the streets around there because it's kind of limited access for certain going, certain ways there, or will it not interfere at all with that?
The access obviously will come off of 6th Street North, and there shouldn't be a reason why construction equipment or cars should be parked along that street.
Okay, that's good to hear. Any other initial questions from the commissioners? Raise your hand if you have a question or would like to talk. Commissioner Triplett, please.
This whole project is surprisingly close. I've never been there before until today, to the prison, so. Have we got sign off from the prison, or do we need anything along that line?
Commissioner Triplett, no, there aren't any special permits required to notify the prison or to get permission from the prison. They were within, I believe, the three hundred and fifty feet for the mailing radius. And again, we did not receive any comments or questions regarding the project.
Any other initial questions at this time? Please raise your hand. Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing on this application. Sarah, have we received any written comments? You could read those into the record at this time.
Did not receive the written comments prior to the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, any public wishing to comment may raise their hands to be called upon prior to commenting. Please state your name and address for the record. Alright. If anyone from the, it looks like Ms. Baldwin has a group with them from the church, if anyone would like to just speak about this, you don't have to, but this would be your opportunity to speak if you have anything you would like to say or add. Nope, you're good? Okay, okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I would like to entertain further discussion or questions from the planning commission. I'll just start quickly. As Commissioner Oaks said, this was a great summary of the history of the cemetery. I did not know part of it was city cemetery. I knew I did not know part of it was city cemetery. I knew that it was St. Michael's, but, or St. Charles, apologize. St. Charles, I think, whatever. I'm sorry. I knew that it was, oh, St. Michael Cemetery, but I didn't know about the part that was the city, and I think it's such a beautiful cemetery right now, and the expansion seems like a good use of the space. Raise your hand if you would like to comment or have any further questions, commissioners. Commissioner Kip?
I'm just gonna reiterate those sentiments as well. That I think this process over the past, you know, decade and change shows a lot of willingness between the parties to work together, and this seems to be a well-thought-out, well-reasoned approach. And as long as the conditions set forth by the, the city are followed, I think this is gonna be a very nice project.
Any other commissioners or anyone else? Or I guess it's commissioners' turn to talk. Commissioner Triplet, are you? Oh, nope.
I was just prepared to make a motion. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, Commissioner Siegfried.
What, um, I know that it's shared with the city, so with the plantings and all that, with the landscape design. Can you hear me? Okay. Then who maintains that? Does the city maintain that for a portion and maintain all of it? Or does St. Michael's maintain their own, that, you know, going forward, once they get all the stuff in place?
Commissioner Siegfried, the city cemetery is completely separate from St. Michael Cemetery. There, I believe Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's actually a road that separates and divides the two along, off of 5th Avenue there. And the, the two cemeteries are fenced individually. So all of the landscaping in this area we're talking about here would be the sole responsibility of the three churches that share that cemetery.
Okay, okay. I just, I knew that they would implement it, then they would do the upkeep. Okay, sounds good.
Any other comments? Okay. Then, at this time, oh, that was discussion, okay. Alright, is there anyone who would like to make a motion? Commissioner Triplet.
I move to recommend to the city council that we approve a conditional use permit and site plan for an expansion of burial sites, including upright columbaria structures within St. Michael Cemetery. And this approval would be subject to findings of fact and conditions listed in the staff report presented at this meeting.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it. Commissioner Oaks, you gotta get your mute off faster. It's a second. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Excuse me. Alright, there is no old business and no new business. General information. Congratulations to Planning Commissioner Tom Triplet on his recent reappointment to a three-year term. Thank you for your continued service.
It was contested, I gather, right?
And I would also like to welcome Michelle Hansen as our new city council liaison. Welcome. Okay, next on the agenda is the open forum. The open forum is a portion of the meeting for the public to ask questions or comment on subjects related to land use that are not part of the meeting agenda. Anyone wishing to comment shall state his name, his or her name, street address and street address for the record. If you could, please raise your hand if you would like to say something for the open forum. Okay, hearing nothing. Excuse me. We'll move on. This concludes the business for on tonight's agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do I hear a second?
A second. Got the mute button.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. It was good to see everyone.
You as well. Bye.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye, everyone.